The council meeting being held on March 1st in Centerville City Hall Council Chambers. Let's start with the roll call starting not to our far left.
Yes, President.
Senator Hayes is present?
Meekum is present.
Hurst is present.
McEwen here.
We have all five council members here, so let's get going to do the business. Let's start with a prayer of thought from Councilwoman Hurst.
I will offer a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this beautiful community. We are grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country, and we are grateful for the opportunity to serve this city. Please bless us this evening as we go about the city's business that they, we will have the guidance and inspiration that we need to do the things that are right for our residents and the people that live here. Please help us to be thoughtful as we plan for the future and that we'll be able to know the things that will continue to make our community thrive and be beautiful. Please bless those that are in Ukraine and Russia that they can have peace and comfort, that they will be able to continue to fight for their freedoms. And bless us as we continue with this drought that we may have the moisture that we need to get through our summer months. We are so grateful for all that thou has given us, and we say things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Let's all rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing is the open session. This is an opportunity for anybody from the public to identify themselves and where they're from and take two to three minutes to discuss the issue that's on their minds. So that open session is now available. Seeing nothing, we'll move on from the open session and we'll move to the business of the meeting. Number one, first item is the Carfax for the Police Program Enrollment Form and Terms and Conditions. And we got Alan Ackerson here, Lieutenant Ackerson, from our police department to talk to us about this.
We should also have Henry Guerrero with Carfax on Zoom.
Hi, how's it going everyone?
Hi there, Henry. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Beautiful.
Welcome, Henry.
Council members, thank you so much for having me on today. Appreciate it.
Okay, Henry, if you could take a sec real quick and just fill in our council and mayor on what Carfax for Police is.
Yeah, absolutely. Carfax for Police is a free service in which we provide law enforcement with access to the Carfax database and our investigative resources at no cost to the department. And what we do is we provide them with vehicle history information to hopefully help them with tracking down suspect vehicles, not only by accessing the entire history that we've created on vehicles since 1981, but by accessing a suite of investigative tools that we've created with a retired team of law enforcement officers here in house.
Thank you. So originally, we became interested in Carfax when one of our officers was interacting with another department and officer, and they were trying to research a vehicle, and the other officer said, "Well, why don't you run it through Carfax?" And so that kind of cued us into it. And so what we run into oftentimes is an inability to know the history of a vehicle and track down vehicles because we're only limited, we're limited to data within the Department of Motor Vehicles, which is actually very limited compared to what Carfax has. So oftentimes, we'll come across an abandoned vehicle, you know, won't have a license plate on it or a license plate extremely old, and we're, we may not find any kind of information on the vehicle at all, on an owner, on the history. And with Carfax, you know, every vehicle seems to have a Carfax history on it. And we're able to find previous owners or find out when and where, when and where it was last serviced or when it was last, you know, the last data for Carfax. There's a couple other investigative tools I found really interesting that I would love to implement in our department. And one is a VIN alert. And so if we're looking for a vehicle, we can enter the VIN number in as an alert, and we'll get, we'll get a message every time that Carfax gets an update with that VIN number. So if we're looking for someone and they say, "Go get an oil change" or something, they could give, you know, send us in the right direction looking for them. They also have a partial plate search option, which is really fascinating. So if you have a car you're looking for and you only have a few numbers on the license plate, you only know, you know, a witness only got the first couple digits, but you have a make and a model, you can plug that in. Right now, the state of Utah has a partial plate search for Utah plates only. And to be honest with you, it isn't the best system. It is not very user-friendly, and it's a lot of work. And looking at Carfax is, it's a lot, its design is really good, and it can do nationwide searches, so all the states rather than just Utah. And so Carfax, in exchange for providing us access to their records, they require data in return. And so originally, they wanted all the, the entire crash report right up on every crash. And that, that didn't work for us. And so what we're doing though is we are providing to, what we're wanting to do is provide to Carfax a limited number of data fields on each crash report, provided to them in bulk form. So every time you crash, each vehicle will provide to them a VIN number, make, model, basic damage information. There are a total of 18 fields. And so right now, for the last two months, I've been having our records custodied and keep track of these, sorry, these data points on a spreadsheet. And she's told me that it takes maybe five or 10 minutes out of the entire week to populate these data fields. And so it's, I believe the return from Carfax will be much more than what we'll put into it. And with great yields for very little work on our side.
What's the downfall of, oh, sorry, did I cut you off?
No, no.
What's the downfall to doing it? Anything?
No, other than the five or 10 minutes a week it takes for us to fill out the spreadsheet.
Well, the downfall is when the public hears we're giving, we're giving public data to a private entity or, you know, or what can be considered restricted or protected data. People get upset about that. If you want to see a great one, watch the Digital Driver's License Debate at the Capitol. There are people who, it won't even be a logical reaction. It'll be emotional and visceral.
So the follow-up to George's statement is a question, and that is, in the background in our packet, it notes that under Utah law, accident reports are generally classified as protected records. So if I look at Exhibit A on the contract, are items one through 18, what, which one of those are or are not protected under Utah law?
It's my understanding that none of them are.
Okay, that, that's right. And it gets to the privacy concerns.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. I did review the initial Carfax agreement. It was very broad. It defined the accident report and data as anything in our report which would require us to redact any personally identifying information, which our accident reports do contain some of that information. And under Utah law, accident reports are considered protected unless you can fall under some of these exceptions. So for instance, you know, the owner of the vehicle or the insurance company, you know, other, other defined exceptions. But the exception that we have made the arrangement with Carfax is that we can provide bulk data information in electronic form so long as it doesn't have that kind of identifying information. So I will say that most of this information, I can say just from the statute specifically says we can provide this kind of, so long as we exclude personal identifying information, we can provide the following information. Any vehicle identifying information that's electronically available, including the make, model, year, the VIN number, the, you know, vehicle involved in the accident, the date of the accident, and any electronically available data that describes the accident and the physical damage to the vehicle. So in reviewing those 18 items, while not every single one of them is, you know, specifically listed, I think that the 18 can fall within this specific description. And Carfax was willing to amend a section of their agreement to redefine the crash data to, specifically to Exhibit A. So we did contact a number of other cities. I don't know if they've provided this exclusion or if they just redact their information, but this is a much better way to go about it, I think, for the city.
Because items 1 through 18 are vehicle-specific. They are not related to the driver at all.
That's correct.
Right. And Councilman Senator Hayes, if you notice, like, all 18 of them are things that are publicly viewable. Like VIN numbers, by law, have to be viewable through windshield. So license plate number, make, model, none of this information is private when it comes to a car.
Yes. Sometimes perception's reality, as we all know, correct?
Why are we doing this at a city level? This seems like this would be a great initiative for the police departments at a state level to do. And just have this run through, like, the ECG system or something else where the additional data you could get there. It just seems weird to me that the model is go to each municipality. It seems like this could be a one-and-done at a state level.
Yeah, I don't know. Henry, do you know anything about?
Yeah, yeah, I was just about to butt in, but I didn't want to cut anybody off there. We do work with some states. For example, your neighbors there to the northeast in Wyoming, we work with their YDOT. YDOT is the Wyoming Department of Transportation, and they actually provide us with monthly uploads for all of the crash data that is made available from their law enforcement agencies there in the state. And then we're able to get a siphon of that data based off of a partnership that we made with YDOT. We have government relations working on the state level, but a lot of different agencies use a lot of different records management systems to write their accident reports. So it's very decentralized at this point, and so we're not getting that data in a timely manner. And so that's why we go department by department, working with them individually to provide them with these investigative tools in exchange for that, those limited fields there to obtain that vehicle damage information in a timely manner so that we can go ahead and update the Carfax vehicle history report with any relevant damage data.
Thank you. Yeah, and I will say as well that, so the state of Utah, they collect crash reports from us, but they only collect reportable crash reports. So whether there has to be $2,500 in damage or an injury. And so we write a lot of crash reports that don't go to the state of Utah and the state, state just with our department. But those, those crash reports will now be able to go to Carfax to update their database, and that really helps everybody.
So if I'm an owner and somebody taps me at McDonald's and ruins my crumple zone and it's 1,500 bucks, and the two parties want to handle it between themselves, we just ratted them out to Carfax. Being nice to you, Carfax, but I'm just saying, we just gave away data that two parties may not want to share.
Right. If those, if the parties brought in the police department to do a crash report, that's the only way.
Yeah, that's the link.
Yeah, I get it, but what I'm saying is that under, under a threshold, it doesn't go to the state.
If the two parties handle it between themselves, they're probably not going to involve the police anyway.
Maybe, maybe not.
But as a buyer of a car, I would want to know that information. And if I'm selling a car, I don't know if I would want to hide that information.
I'm, I'm not trying to put a value statement on the owner of the car. I'm just saying, it gets, it gets to that same issue of like, well, what do I own of my own data relative to my vehicle and things like that? So I'm just trying to preface for the discussion that comes up later when somebody goes, "Well, why did you do that? What, what was your legitimate purpose? Did you get enough value out of it to allow for that?" And that's where these investigative tools, are they unique? Is Carfax the only one that has them? Are there no national databases that provide anything similar?
Not, not on this level that I know of.
Okay. That's, I'm not trying to sink this. I'm just trying to make sure that we're lined up where we are with the public should they come asking.
That's fair. Lieutenant, I don't mind to cut you off there. Just to briefly address that, with the Carfax database, we're the only database out there that has every 17-digit VIN since 1981, since the inception of the VIN number, that has collected all of this vehicle data. And we've never purged our database since then. And so every single record for these vehicles that we collect is available to law enforcement to help them with their investigation. So you won't find a more robust system, and when it comes to the partial plates, there's no others that can narrow down a partial tag by three characters for a nationwide search.
I'm generally inclined to agree that we ought to approve it. However, I would admit that I got a Carfax report on a car that I recently sold and was more than, a little offended that literally every service that I've had on that car in the last 10 years was listed. And I had no idea that people were reporting that.
Your service station.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you, if you, if you change your oil on your own and somebody buys it and they say, "Wait, you've never changed your oil?" You say, "Well, I've done it on my own." It doesn't show up on the Carfax.
Doesn't show up on the Carfax, but if you have it done.
If you've done it at a service station, it don't show up there.
That's right.
It just goes to the issue of consent. People, people believe that when they own a piece of property that there's certain rights communicated.
But at the same time, I have never had a service station tell me, "Oh, by the way, I'm reporting this to Carfax."
No, but that's, that's, these happen everywhere. And this is one of the situations where the logical is VIN is publicly viewable. Therefore, the data should be public as well, but that's not the impression people have. And there's, there's certain communicated property rights people think they have, and that includes protected records related to this. So it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be a huge issue here in town, but people are pretty interested in that.
We could have someone come in and really complain, so we ought to be aware of it.
And again, the context, at least of this agenda item, is to help law enforcement from a protection and safety standpoint. Is that a fair statement? Would you modify that?
I wouldn't say it's, it's, it would be a great investigative tool that will assist us in locating vehicles and solving crimes.
And the only way that our police department can get access to this database is through providing data. We can't buy a subscription?
That, that, yeah, that is correct. Yeah, so we, this is a strictly a data sharing partnership program where we partnered up with over 5,000 law enforcement across the country. None of them have ever paid us here, and we've been doing this for about a decade now, where we provide these tools for free for law enforcement.
Well, you got to pay, pay data to play.
Well, that's, but yeah.
I try, yeah, I tried circumventing it as well, and no, you got to, if you want the information, you got to add into the information too.
Fair enough.
Any other questions, counsel?
No, it makes me a little, I don't know, I, it seems like we're giving out a lot of information, but I don't think as a council, I mean, it's just like Bill said, every gas station's doing it. So we don't get to vote for every gas station.
It's a fact of life that you really need to realize.
Yeah, it's, I had no idea, absolutely no idea. I changed my own oil so there.
Well, you're giving, you're giving away more data on your cellphone every day than you're giving away through this, but that, you know, that's a different situation. That you're opting into by owning your cellphone and clicking all those agreements you never read. It gets sticky when there's, there's the appearance that there's no consent from the individual. That's where it gets sticky.
Right. I think when you go have your oil changed, I think you should have to sign a thing saying people can say you've been there. I don't, I think that's kind of spooky myself, but.
All those things said, I would make a motion that we authorize either the chief or the mayor or Lisa to sign the relevant forms to enroll the police department in this program.
Second.
Have a motion for a second for the discussion.
I just want, Lisa, you're comfortable with the information that's, based on George's comments, are you comfortable with where we're at on this?
Yes, given the changes that Carfax was willing to make to the agreement, we've really limited what, what we need to provide them.
Okay. I just wanted to know from a legal standpoint.
And it reduces our requirement to redact because that really, I believe, would be burdensome to staff.
Yeah, I, that was very wise. I appreciate staff working through that to make sure that it was easier for the police department to keep up with it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Well, appears unanimous. Thank you for being with us, Henry, and thank you, Lieutenant, for taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate you.
All right, let's go to item number two. This is the purchase of Census iPro smart water meters and radios. And Alberto Ortiz from our Public Works Department is going to present on this. And it looks like Mike's joining in from his conference, but Alberto, we're excited to have you in person and hear your presentation. Does everybody know Alberto? Introduce yourself. Make sure, in case we all don't know who you are and what you do.
My name's Alberto. I work for Centerville City Water Department. I've been here for three years now, around three years. So this is a good opportunity for me. I guess now all the bosses are gone, I guess.
And Alberto's always there in the water fixes, so whenever we have the breaks, you're always there, so.
Always in the hole, I guess.
Yeah.
So moving on to the topic, the Public Works Department would like to move forward with the purchase of the new smart iPro meters from, smart meters and radios from Mountainland Supply. We got a grant from the Bureau of Recreation for 75,000. It's a match grant, so we're putting in 75,000. And this project would help us put, install 490 more smart meters into our system. Now, we already have 980 smart meters in our system as, in this moment.
How many meters do we have total?
In total, right now, in this moment, we have 980 meters.
That, you have 980 or 980 of the, 80 of these done? I thought that's what you.
Done in this moment.
What are the total number of meters in the system?
Total meters in the system, we have.
I don't need an exact number, just approximately.
Around 4,350.
And where do we expect to deploy these meters? What portion of, is it quadrant in the city we're looking for, or is it just going to be swap-ins as?
So as, as we read meters, we have specific routes. So right now, we have specific routes that we have meter readers go around. We're thinking of getting them in, so Route 1, because usually we went around doing different routes to help the meter readers read more efficiently, but now we're going to go from Route 1 all the way to, I think we have like 36, 37 routes to finish off. So this would help finish off Route 1 and start on Route 2.
Where's Route 1?
Yeah, where is Route 1?
Route 1 is on the northeast corner, so Rolling Hills area up there.
Brent, was the, or maybe you can answer this question, was the $75,000 already included in our budget?
So we had seven, we had 50,000 budgeted for meters, and we had around 25,000 budgeted for equipment for a new generator. But since we're not planning on getting a new generator, we're using that 25,000 to get to our 75,000 to match the grant.
Yes and no. So that just kicks the 25,000 down the road. Knowing, based off the staff report, that we've got issues with, or at least our last council meeting, which I listened to, I didn't attend, but I listened to after the fact.
Our, our match can be in kind. So a lot of it's labor. So we'll do that match over the space of the two, three years that it takes to get this in.
So, so the Mountainland quote for 150,000, is that, you said some of it's in kind, that's not, is that in addition to this?
That would be in addition, yeah.
Okay.
So, and I believe Mike is on.
Wait, so it's not just a straight 75, 75?
He's saying labor can be included.
Right, yeah, it can be in kind. I don't know exactly what the division is, but that's the discussion that.
But still, the cost is 150 grand, so walk us through that math.
Yeah, yeah, that's what my question is, is I'm not, the quote that I'm looking at versus what you just said.
Labor and all of a sudden that 150,000 dollars.
Yeah, and Mike would have to answer that.
Mike?
There, Mike?
Yes, I'm here to weigh in, I guess. So Alberto's right. What I've, what we've done is we've got 75 from the Bureau. We've got 50,000 that we have set up and change out of meters. There's two ways that we can do this. The way that I was looking at it is by the time we got the generator ready to go, I don't think that we'll be able to get it here and get it installed. We are reevaluating a little bit on the generator. So the bottom line is we have a year to get the meters in. I'm proposing that we take and not use the kind that we just go ahead and get 150,000. I, I'm proposing that we take and not use the kind, that we just go ahead and get $150,000 worth of meters and we get them installed. I think that's, in my opinion, that's the best interest. The labor we will do as we have time to do it. But the bottom line, if, if you feel like that's a problem, we can, you know, we've got in our budget for next year, I know that it's not been approved yet, but another 50,000, so we could use 25,000 of that. It's going to take us, you know, we have a year to get it done, and so, you know, we'll be doing it at the end of next budget year real easily, so.
And Mike, Spencer, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that approach. I just want to make sure as a council, we understand that if there was $25,000 in this year's budget that we're using towards meters as opposed to the generator, we've just robbed one budget category that we're going to have to supplement in addition to the following year if we're focused on that. It's not like that $25,000 obligation just goes away. It'll be pushed to a subsequent year.
That is true, but we are getting $25,000 because we're getting the match, that if we don't match it, we lose that $25,000.
I'm not, like I said, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying, as you think about that, it's a $25,000 add to next year's budget.
I, I think the real question is, in my opinion, is, is the water department going to come in under budget? I believe that we are. There are a couple purchases we're not going to be able to make happen this year with the way the economy was, when we predicted a year ago. You know, we felt like the economy was going to be a little bit different, but it's not. And so, you know, to get the generator here is not realistic. I don't think it's going to happen. We've had some conversations with it. There's a couple other old projects that are probably not going to be able to, to happen like the Duncan Springs that was in there as well. So, you know, we're going to come in under budget. We're not asking city council to give us any extra money. I, I do understand what you're saying about down the road, if we decide to go back after the generator, that we are kicking it down the road.
Yeah, and I just want to be, make sure we're all clear on that.
Yeah, no, I think that's.
We're just reprioritizing. Both need to happen. We're just putting one up a year, so, but we're just reprioritizing with the funding and the projects that make sense right now.
Can I, I'm assuming we've picked this meter because this is the one we like. I just, the letter about the sole source, can you just address that a little bit for us?
This is the Census, from Census?
Yeah.
Regarding sole source?
Yeah, I mean, does that mean we didn't bid it because we have to get them from Mountainland? I, I just want to understand that.
Well, I'm going to kick off just a little bit, and then I'm going to allow Alberto to come in and chime in on why, the benefit of why we're going with the iPearls, but the iPearls is one that everybody's starting to use. It's, it works really well in clean and dirty water. So when I say dirty water, I'm talking irrigation. In the clean water aspect, it passes the sand to go through. Now I'm going to let Alberto tell you a little bit about the technology of why we went with the iPearl meter.
So the technology we have with the iPearl meters is we have the reverse flow, so any water going backwards into our system, we're able to detect. It also has a no flow, which means there's no water going through the pipe, and we have a leak detection, so high water usage, seeing if there's any big difference, any high usage to someone's normal rate of usage.
Is iPearl the only one that has that, those features?
From what we have in our system right now, bringing in a different brand would kind of, it would be hard to mingle the programming together.
Right.
The other meters you can salt are the iPearl.
They're proprietary.
We're sticking with the same brand. Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
So on the, on the leak detection, it mentioned in the spec sheet that it would do text or email. What's our, our plan to let residents know about that, rather than it just hits Public Works and do they make a call, or can people sign up if they have a meter and say, tell me if there's a leak?
So in the future, we'll get antennas where we can actually read them, and that can, when there's a high usage, we can have it to send a message or an email, depending which one people would find less invasive. Or we can actually set up so we can call if there's a leak or anything like that.
And how soon do we think we'll be needing the antennas in the budget?
I wouldn't be able to say right now.
Okay.
Well, George's answer your question, probably, I mean, counsel, you want to answer your question, I mean, it, it depends on how fast we, and how aggressive we get at this. I don't, can't remember if I've stated this in city council or not, but these are battery operated. So if I went in and changed all of them in 20 years, when the batteries go bad and they're out of warranty, then we have to budget a lump sum of money and come in and say, oh, we got to replace all the meters. If we do them over time, then that allows them to fail, and I feel like it keeps our budget lower and more consistent, but rather than taking them, you know, putting all of them in at once and then having them all go bad at once, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, you've mentioned that before, and I, I agree with the philosophy on there. I'm just thinking about, you know, at the state level, there's a lot of smart city initiatives that are going on. There's talk of funding and grants related to that sort of thing. So I would prefer to lead out in smart city technology where we can, because that not only, not only is it a showcase for the community, but when it comes to, you know, partnerships with, with other agencies on that sort of technology and perhaps even enhancing the system, it would be nice to be in a position to do that, that where we've got it in the ground, we're ready to go versus we're talking about it. So it's, it's kind of a competing thing.
Right, and, and we could go with it right now. We could actually pay Weber Basin to read our meters if we wanted. They may have to put a tower in. They would read once a, a month for us, is what they would read for their fee. They would charge us. You know, my hopes is that we can find a grant down the road that we can get to have. We feel we either need one or two towers. We've had studies done on both of them. You know, one study said that we could get by with one, and we might have a few that may not read right or something, that we may need a second one. But, you know, our, my, my plan down the road is to be able to take and to get the towers up, you know, somewhere when we get around a third or two-thirds of the, excuse me, a third or a half of the meters in, then that's when I would be more aggressive after going after the tower, because then we'd be switching over from a meter reader to going out on the radio, which my understanding is, is with, when we have the, our, our own capabilities, it will come into us and say, so-and-so, oh, somebody has a leak at their house, so we can go in and let them know. That's what it'll take, is to have our own stuff in order to be able to allow the, you know, get back to the residents on a leak and stuff. And that, that's kind of the water conservation that we're trying to head after.
So, yeah, there's the water conservation aspect, and then having had my house flooded by leaks twice, my insurance company would sure like it if I had some means of detecting that. I'm sure they would provide me some sort of incentive. Actually, they did. They sent me some water detection, leak devices. But I, I think that as residents, there would be, there would be possible incentives for them to want to push that technology forward, especially if they can tell their insurance company, yeah, I can, I could detect a leak.
Yeah, and you can tell, this quantity of meters that we have in that are radios right now, in my opinion, is pretty small. You know, like I say, I think when we get a third of the way through, that's when we want to start jumping on, you know, getting a cell tower up. I would be in favor at this point, looking at grants and seeing if I can find a grant or something that would pay for the cellphone tower, the cell tower for us, or the radio tower.
Totally with you on that. So this, this, this purchase would put us close to that, if we get these all in the ground over the next year or so?
It helps, it's not going to use all the way.
It's only going to give you 1,300 out of 4,300.
Well, my thirds are smaller than most people's thirds.
That's cool.
Well, I'm up for it anytime I can find a grant and save our taxpayers some money is when I'm up for it. You know, if I can get it sooner, and like, you know, we look for grants all the time. I mean, it seems like, you know, I spend more time looking at grant stuff than I do junk mail anymore because there's so much coming in right now. But, you know, my goal is to move forward as fast as we can with the whole thing, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, so we're not having to change batteries out real fast. But as far as getting out, getting them read, I would love to get on board sooner than later.
Mike, it's Spencer. Just a quick question, I hope it's a quick question. Expiration date on the quote was February 25th. In today's world, sometimes they hold us to that. Are they going to still honor this price?
Yes. If I can order them tomorrow, they'll honor the price.
Okay.
Well, I'm all for taking, it sounds like Alberto and Mike are taking advantage of the grant that we have right now to split the costs, and that's a big reason why it's coming forth now. Further questions before I ask for a motion?
Well, I would put forth a motion that we authorize the expenditure for the meters as listed for the bid amount of $149,889.64.
Second.
Motion to second. Further discussion? Stewardial call vote, starting with Councilman Ince.
Aye.
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 That passes 5-0. Thank you. And Alberto, fabulous job. Good job.
Good job. Good to see you.
Come back again.
Maybe. I don't know.
Hey, we're not as scary as you thought we would be, are we?
Just lots of questions.
We're a lot better.
Thank you. Item number three, when I was, as you know, brought to you a couple weeks ago, a dozen names for committees within our, our city committees, I just was looking at those lists, which Jennifer keeps for me, and this list that Lisa keeps, and I just, and then Councilwoman Meeke had mentioned, there's, there's no such thing anymore, and I agreed with her with, as the COG Transportation Committee. So we were, I was just staying, since we're all excited to, working in new jobs and there are, are other residents are within the committees, I just wanted schedules cleaned up, and Lisa was kind enough to patronize me. And so this just kind of reflects that cleaned up schedule of, oh, and she discovered that the Weber Basin Water Conservancy District and Councilman Ince had also mentioned, who is this guy? It's not even something we appoint. So she, she suggested maybe we just cleaned up. Anything else, Lisa, on, on what you did with it that I've missed?
No, I just appreciate the mayor looking in detail and suggesting those corrections. Even though I pushed back, I said, no, those are right, and he said, no, look at them. So, anyway, I did, and he was right. So we'll make those corrections and hopefully.
That's because I've had it in my basement on my couch, as well as all these new committees, to get them all filled, so everybody's excited, and I've looked at them many, many times. So, so that's all this was, was just cleaning up that schedule, which Lisa was willing to do for us. So that's, that's what this item is.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, because we need to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-07, which is in regards to city council appointments to boards and committees.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Puzzled? All right, let's move on to item number four, and this is, Jennifer, you're on board. Give us a little training.
Okay, today's training is going to be a little different. I gave you all a heads up that we're going to play Kahoot. So for those of you who haven't played a Kahoot before, this is just going to be a fun little trivia-type quiz, all regarding, I almost gave away one of the answers, the OPMA stuff. So how it's going to work is, I'm going to share my screen here in one second. You're just going to get on a web browser on your phone to log in, and we, our purpose here is not to embarrass anybody or to point fingers at you and say, you don't know the answers, so we want you to use a nickname or a fake name or whatever, so we don't see your actual name on the screen. Unless you really, really want to, that's up to you. So when the time comes, use a fake name. It can be something funny. Make sure it's appropriate. Then also.
Now we have to tell staff or council?
What was that?
Is that more for staff or is that for council?
All of the above. Staff, you are welcome to play as well.
I think staff should play, too.
It seems like you're accustomed to telling that to staff, not to the council.
Lisa's not allowed to play because she'll win. Everybody else is allowed to play. So for those of you who may not have played a Kahoot, you get points for selecting the right answer, but you also get points for how fast you select the right answer. So you do get extra points for being speedy, but accuracy comes first. If you get the wrong answer, then it doesn't matter how fast you got the wrong answer. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm excited. So let, I'm going to share the screen on Zoom as well, so if our Zoom staff want to participate, then they, uh, it actually might not work. Let me see.
Good, because.
Oh, yeah, that works.
Actually, Jennifer and I played, and she won. But she had not revealed the speed. On the first question, she didn't mention anything about speed.
Yes, you have, you're, you're incentivized if you answer more quickly.
Right.
Okay, staff on Zoom, can you see the Kahoot screen, too?
Okay, so.
You've got the Zoom shady on there already.
Go to Kahoot.it on your phone.
Okay, so go to your phone, there's a QR code on your screen.
You can just do the QR code, right?
You can scan the QR code, or you can go to Kahoot.it on your browser. Oh, I'm not going to do it on my phone because I got to run the thing. And I'll wait for a couple minutes for names to pop up. We need to have at least six, because there's six of you.
Brent.
You spelled.
I was going to say.
Have to spell my name right if you're going to use my name.
You spelled the name wrong.
So somebody else has logged in as Brent. I'm guessing that's Bryce.
I like the money, my money.
Bryce is Brent.
Right.
Okay, did you?
Well, he did say something about impersonating your boss.
Like, get your camera up.
As he was prepping.
Okay, now, okay.
Also, so you know, there is a 30-second time limit on each question. So it'll show the question first, and then it'll show you the answers, and you have 30 seconds to select your answer. Uh-oh, we got two Brants.
Sorry.
All we need is a Brant eight.
It's still open. Sorry, I didn't see that part.
All right, hold on, Alberto's getting there.
I love these nicknames.
Yeah.
Money, money, money. I'm going to pull this, maybe I'm going to, can I pull this away more?
Oh, okay.
Go down here. Okay.
Everybody entered if it wants to.
Hold on, he's going to get his name in there.
Uh-oh.
Everyone close their eyes. Okay, are we good? Are we ready?
Hold on, Bill's almost there.
Oh, okay.
Did you get in, Robin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that screen you up? Does the screen just go up?
Yes, yes, okay.
Anybody else online?
Well, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, so hopefully six of those are council members.
They'll never tell.
The people around me are in. All right, we're going to start. Here we go, OPMA training.
Okay, hang on, why is it this?
And I'll read the questions out loud, too.
Oh, I see it. It's loading still.
What is OPMA an acronym for? So the answers are on your screen, and then like, it should color coordinate with your phone as well. Okay, we got nine on the correct answer. Two people selected the Operations of Public Meetings Act. OPMA is an acronym for Open and Public Meetings Act. I just have a couple notes here. That's my husband. What's he doing?
He wanted to play Jocko.
Okay, so as you all know, the Open and Public Meetings Act is just an act to ensure that the city is taking its actions and conducting its business.
Everybody will show. It'll show a leaderboard as we go.
I just wanted to compare how I did.
Yeah, you will see that.
They're getting competitive.
I can see that started.
Let them figure their competitive thing.
Hold on, let me let Cole in really quick. Wait, where's my, sorry, Cole, I can't, I don't know how to let you in right now. Oopsie. Okay, so, the Open and Public Meeting Act is an act to ensure that the city is taking its actions and conducting its business regarding the public's business openly. So, whenever a quorum is present, that's considered an open and public meeting. Obviously, City Council meetings, work session meetings are all considered open and public meetings, so anybody can attend and listen. We just want to make sure that we're conducting the city's business in an open setting. Just a side note, if by chance we all happen to gather at a social gathering or a party or something that's not considered a public meeting, just make sure you don't discuss business if we're all at a social gathering, so, pretty self-explanatory there.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? General, Open and Public Meetings Act. Good? Good job to the nine. All right, next question. Oh, here's our scoreboard. Hazy Summer is in the lead at nine hundred and fifty-seven points. Nice. How far in advance must City Council meetings be noticed to the public? Oh, that was quick, twenty-four hours, correct, except for those two folks. Yes, City Council meetings, actually, not just City Council meetings, any open and public meeting must be noticed to the public at least twenty-four hours in advance. We try to get City Council meetings noticed the Friday before a Tuesday. That's to give you guys the chance, obviously, to review all the information and pack it, but also so we can get that twenty-four hour deadline. Okay.
Does the agenda have to be made totally available, or is it just an announcement of the meeting?
Yes, the agenda does.
The date, time, and place. And for those of you that put three, the twenty-four hour notice is just the agenda and the date and time and place of the meeting. There are additional noticing requirements for zoning matters or other things, so maybe that's what you were thinking of.
Yeah, different items do require.
That falls under LUDMA, is that correct?
Yeah.
And also, just also clarify, you can add documents and supporting documentation within the twenty-four hours. Again, it doesn't change the agenda, we just can't add new items to the agenda.
That's what I was going to ask, Brent, because we add things in the last twenty-four hours.
Yep. Okay, any other questions? All right, next. Oh, scoreboard, Hazy Summer still in the lead, nineteen twenty-four. I don't know who that is, but good job.
That's Lisa.
I'm blaming you in the way I'm doing.
How many members must vote to enter a closed session? Nice, okay, a little more spread on this one, two-thirds. And just to clarify, this is two-thirds of members that are present must vote, so it doesn't have to be two-thirds of the whole board or committee. Two-thirds of those that are present must vote to enter a closed session.
So, for specifics, that, to get to a two-thirds vote with five of us here, you actually have to have four of you vote.
Four of five or three of four?
Not three of four, three of four would be short. That'd only be sixty percent, not sixty-six point six seven.
Seventy-five.
No, if three voted yes. Three of, oh, sorry, I thought you said it's a three of five.
Three of four.
Three of four, yes.
Both correct.
Slim Shady has the highest answer streak of three, and Hazy Summer is still in the lead, but Haas is sneaking up. All right, next question. Which of the following is not a reason to enter a closed session? All of the above reasons are reasons to enter a closed session pending a reasonably imminent litigation, character competence, or, this is character physical competence technically, but I had a word limit on my answers, so, character physical competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, and deployment of security personnel devices or systems. There are more reasons that you can enter into a closed session, but these are the most common ones. So, any questions on this? Hazy Summer still in the lead, Brant Hanson sneaking up. And Slim Shady still has a high answer streak of four. All right. An audio recording of a closed session is not required if the purpose of the meeting is to exclusively to discuss, oh, is exclusively to discuss. Nice, this one was kind of a trick question because there were two correct answers. Character, physical competency, or physical or mental health of an individual, and deployment of security personnel, devices, or systems do not require an audio recording or minutes. In this case, if that's the only topic that is going to be discussed in the closed session, then we just have the mayor sign an affidavit that says this is the sole purpose of the meeting, and then we are not required to keep a recording or minutes. For all the other reasons, we do keep a recording and minutes, but obviously, those are not made available to the public. Any questions on this one?
Brent is only three points.
Whoever Brant Hanson is, he's getting close. Minutes are the official record of a meeting. How long are we required to retain meeting minutes? Ooh, this one's split. Minutes are a permanent record, we keep them forever. So, if you look back in our records vault, we have minutes all the way back to when the city was founded, so, yeah, they are a permanent record, we don't ever delete them.
What's the furthest you've ever gone back on something, Lisa?
You mean to research?
In minutes?
For minutes.
Gosh, maybe the sixties? Sometimes we've gone back, yeah, for a number of items. Sometimes we have to get them out, we have them in a separate storage area, and then also, if you run out of space, you can send them to the state archives to help with storage.
Do we have them digitized and searchable?
Digitized, yes. We, I don't know how far back they go.
I just know if you could do an easy search, you know, we had this.
Yeah, I know Marcia would search on Laserfish, but I don't know how far back they go, but yes, there's a lot of them on that, and she would search quite a bit.
I think we.
We had that discussion when we moved from one web platform to the other, about minutes disappearing from the public view, so, yeah.
I think the earliest I've seen in Laserfish, at least, is back to the nineteen seventies. So.
Pretty good.
Which is pretty good.
As long as you don't mention how old that is, we're fine.
Before I was born, so. All right. Oh, Slim Shady just pulled in the lead.
Upset, Hazy Summer.
All right, good job, Slim Shady, highest answer streak of six, that's pretty good. Okay. True or false, council members may text and email each other while council is convened? The answer is false. While we're in session, council members should not be texting each other or emailing each other, and in addition to that, also, we should refrain from creating a meeting outside of a meeting by, you know, email threads or discussing business over text or something when that's not in a public setting.
All right, I just think I saw Lisa cringe that there were two wrong answers on that one.
Probably Bryce, so.
I'm going to go back and re-watch the YouTube. Tell me what minute are we at right now? We can take a screenshot of that one, Lisa.
That was the two council members texting each other.
That's right.
I saw her picking our favorite colors.
Blue's always the wrong color.
Yes, please, please do not text each other while council is convened. Oh, no, Jake's not playing. We have to start over, I'm just kidding. Okay, Slim Shady's still in the lead, Haas is in a close second, Brant Hanson sneaking back up.
He's hanging.
Question eight, what's the minimum number of members that must be present at the anchor location in order to hold an electronic meeting? Ooh, this was kind of, this was kind of a trick question, too, because Lisa and I actually had to look it up because we didn't know. There, in the minutes policy, there's currently not a minimum number that have to be present, so the answer is zero. Although, the exception to that is during COVID, we did the electronic meeting determination, where the mayor could sign the determination saying it's unsafe for us to meet together at the anchor location, and then everybody can meet, you know, electronically. So, right now, I mean, we could have staff here, one person here, and people can meet electronically because there's not something in the policy. Lisa, you look like you have something you want to say.
Well, I was just going to say, we did amend this, so we used to have a certain number that had to be present, I think we had to have a quorum present in order to have an electronic meeting, and then during COVID, there were some emergency provisions that allowed us to have an electronic meeting, but they also made some other amendments, so we amended our electronic meeting policy, and there was a discussion whether we should have one or a quorum still, and the council went with zero. So, right now, that is our policy, if you want to change that. I know there are some state laws as well.
That's what I was going to say, what's the state's position on that?
Well, it was just passed.
Yeah, it was silent on it with the amendments from 2020, but they recently passed, I think Councilmember McEwen said that likely passed, and I think they will just say that we have to designate in our policy what a quorum is when you have an electronic meeting, so almost implying that those of you that are calling in or, you know, zooming in would not count, but we've always said, yes, you do. So, I think it's something we'll bring back up to you and decide if you want, you know, at least one or two. The other distinction on this is that you can, none of the council members have to be here, but we do have to have an anchor location for an electronic meeting for the public, unless it is an electronic determination that it's unsafe for anybody to come here. So, just remember that, that we still have to have an anchor location, so staff will be here, it's just that no one from the public body has to be here.
But during the COVID.
During, yes, if the mayor signs an electronic, and that only lasts for thirty days, and then he has to sign another one.
Yeah, just you having me re-sign those in the planning questionnaire every thirty days.
Kept my job during the.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this one?
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, right now.
Kudos to whoever got that one. Well, we'll know in a second.
Did nothing change?
Hit next.
Yeah, try it again.
Nope.
Oh.
True or false, the City Council should avoid talking about matters that are not listed on the agenda? Nice, a hundred percent on that one, good.
I'm going to take a screenshot of that one, too, Lisa.
Yes, we want to try to not stray from items that are listed on the agenda because that is what the public has been noticed of, this is what we're planning on discussing tonight. Obviously, sometimes discussions tend to talk about other things, but for the most part, we want to try to stick to the agenda as much as possible.
But that brings up the issue of reasonable specificity, what is required in order to make it an agenda item or an item that can be discussed, because like we say, like, City Manager report, that has no specificity. I'm just pointing that out.
We used to have City Manager and Mayor, because everything was listed that they were going to talk about.
So, it's not a discussion, though. So, the point, the point of a City Manager report, to me, is informational, not for discussion purposes, so, when we get into a discussion, we are in violation, but I'd prefer if we're going to have a discussion, that it be listed on an agenda for discussion. The City Manager report, from my position, feels it's more informational, giving you an idea or what's upcoming, not necessarily for discussion purposes.
So, then by that definition, you're saying no staff instruction can take place during that or the mayor's report? Because it would be informational only.
Not necessarily, because it could come back, the direction could be bring this back for a City Council agenda item.
And the council report that we do to.
Well, same thing, it's like, what's reasonable specificity?
Topic for another night.
Yeah, that's a good point. In addition to this, like I said, occasionally, some things do get a little bit off the exact topic of what's on the agenda, but you cannot, the council cannot take any action or make a vote on something that's not specifically listed on the agenda, so, yeah. Okay, any other discussion on this one?
Well, I guess I just have one commentary on that, you know, in addition to providing the public with reasonable notice of topics that you're going to talk about, you know, sticking to the agenda item and perhaps waiting for another meeting, you know, if you're getting off topic, because there are often a lot of people waiting, and I think it's respectful for those that are here for other agenda items that you stick to the topic matters, and so we are, you know, and the second point is that oftentimes, if you bring things up that are not on the agenda, staff might not be prepared to respond, so, anyway, a couple of extra tips, requests.
Extra credit on the quiz.
Let's see if our scoreboard will update now. There we go. Okay, Slim Shady's still in the lead, Haas close second. Okay.
What happened to Hazy Summer?
Fell asleep.
A full audio recording is required from all public meetings except.
Oh, I did that wrong. Oh, my.
Nice, site visits. Work sessions, special meetings, electronic meetings, all still require audio recordings, and minutes taken, site visits, traveling tours, field trips, those kind of things. We don't do audio recordings, but again, no vote or action can be taken while you're on those field trips, and also, I mean, just in general, try not to discuss too much business on those visits as well. I mean, going to visit Islandview Park or the water place or whatever, those are, they're field trips, so. Okay, any discussion or questions on this one?
Last one.
Yep, there's the last question, Slim Shady's still in the lead. Haas, you've got to get this one real fast to pull up, whoever you are. Shorty has the highest answer streak of five. Okay, last question. How soon must the audio recording and approved minutes be made available to the public? Good, three days. So, after, after a meeting and we approve, or no, audio recording, yeah, both of them, sorry, my brain is shutting off. Three days after they're approved. Audio recordings don't get approved, so I generally just make those available immediately following a meeting the next day, and then approved minutes. Need a couple of signatures and get the seal on them, and then they get posted to the state website and to our city website as well, for people to view and find them there.
On that topic, Mayor, I wonder if maybe some, as we read through our minutes, sometimes they're pretty vague, and maybe they miss some of our specific council comments that I think are really great for our public to see. I don't know if there's a way for our transcribers. Nowadays, you can almost do a voice to text, and maybe they just voice to text, and then they're going through that, where they're not having to transcribe it all quickly, they can kind of use some of our technology to our advantage and capture some of the actual things, comments that are made, as well as some more data points that are given, that would just be a point of observation as it relates to our minutes.
We always have the right to amend the minutes, but you've got to be careful about taking a minute and turning it into a transcript, and that's something we've had problems with before.
Right, and maybe there's some middle ground.
Yeah, I mean.
I feel as I read through our minutes, they don't, they, they almost are too generic.
Yeah, but, you know, every council member has their reserved right to modify the minutes, so if, you know, if you ever feel that a comment isn't correct, or is not representative, like you did where you had a few words that changed the context, we can do that.
I just think it's helpful to be a little bit more specific for the public's benefit.
I just like to see what they paraphrase, because sometimes you're like, why did you pick that comment? That's not the one I wanted you to paraphrase.
I think they are pretty generic. There is the audio recording that sits out there, but I don't know the public's going to.
I know, it's just easier to.
The nice thing about the minutes, though, is it is a shorter version, but I agree, I feel like they maybe are a little bit generic. I agree, I don't want to read verbatim, I'd probably rather listen to the audio.
Yeah, I don't want a deposition, to your point, George. I don't want, I don't want transcription, but I think there could be a little better specificity at times.
That's fun, do we have, like, more?
No, that's it.
We've got to see who won, next.
This is it. Here's our final podium, third place with eight thousand four hundred ninety-three points, Hazy Summer, ten out of eleven, Haas. Haas, first place 10 out of 11. Slim Shady. Okay, who's Slim Shady?
The real Brant Hanson.
The real Brant Hanson, please stand up.
You were running two?
No, it was Ian, that was totally Bryce, he misspelled his last name.
That's the beauty of anonymity, we'll never know.
Hey, well, that is your open in public meetings act training for this year. That just goes over the fundamentals of the open in public meetings act. So obviously, if you have any more questions or concerns, there are a couple handouts in the packet with more information there and you can always go read state code if you feel so inclined, but.
Yeah, she gave us quite a bit in the packet, and like you say, and feel free also to obviously contact Jennifer or Lisa or Brant or whoever with any specific questions. We want to make sure we get it right and we do it right.
Thank you all for participating in our cahoot.
Thank you to Jennifer.
Jennifer, go, nice work.
It kept these guys on my left.
I was even excited, I didn't even play.
Excited, disappointed, ecstatic.
Lisa and I had a face down on yesterday or Friday or whatever, and I beat her, but only because I made the quiz. She knows all the laws better than I do. Okay, that's all, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so let's go to I have number five. This is three items on the summary action calendar for the bike safe inlet gate, great project and the lane subdivision of culinary water line labor and lane subdivision of culinary water line materials. We have people here, if you have any questions on that, we have, I don't know if Cameron's here for that, are you? Is that why you're here? Yeah, if you have any questions on the summary action calendar, those three items.
I didn't have any questions, does anybody?
I don't have any.
Make a motion that we, sorry to make you come up, make a motion that we approve the items on the summary action calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, let's do a roll call vote starting with Councilman Ince.
Aye.
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 That's you now, Cameron, thanks for being here.
Great job, Cameron, look how quickly you got through that. Michael sends you every time.
An even easier audience.
Okay, let's go to, speaking of minutes, that's the next item, number six, minutes reviewed acceptance. We have the minutes of the February 15th work session and the February 15th city council minutes. Did any of you notice anything that you want to change on those minutes?
Yes. In the work session minutes, line 34 and line 42, Aquifer is misspelled, Aquifer is spelled A-Q-U-I-F-E-R.
I had to learn that recently, so it's true. And that's both 34 and 42, where you're making that change.
I don't think it was anywhere else, I think I checked it, but yeah.
Any other changes? Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes with those changes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes with the changes specified.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's go to city council report. Today's chance is for Councilman Summer Hayes.
I'll start by saying this is for information and not for discussion, but no. I am now on the South Davis Rec Center board with the appointments as well as our trails committee liaison. As an update from the South Davis Rec Center, membership post-COVID continues to trend upward. We had a little downtrend in membership because of their facility update. I don't know how many members of the council used the facility, but it was down in various stages between the more of the leisure pool area versus the lap pool. You don't see a lot of the upgrades because those upgrades were air handlers and some of the roof type of upgrades. So good things that happened there, but behind the scenes. The bond expires in 2026. If you've also been to the rec center or been kind of listening in, the board previous, obviously to me being there, has been working a lot on a facility expansion, locker room remodels, new 50-meter competition pool that would extend out to the south. So they're looking at doing a bond referendum that may come up this, this coming election cycle. They've done extensive community surveys on what would or would not be included and that was part of the design process that they went through with VCBO as the architect.
How'd they do those surveys?
Just out through emails. I remember getting one, they sent them out to their actual membership people that provided their emails when they sign up so that they can kind of get the feedback from people that actually use the facility as well as other community members to.
Don't remember getting those.
So, as with the bond referendum, they have engaged bond council for that and looks like that'll, that'll come up. I did ask the question about the overlap or would there be an overlap between that bond and the existing bond? The answer that was given to me at the time would be yes, there might be a couple of years of bond overlap and that would be part of the informational package that would go out. From a Centerville city standpoint, we're in a favorable position. We have three community members that serve on that board, Todd Myers, who chairs the board as a community member, and then Marty Money also is a community member along with that. So we have good representation, which is nice. They've discussed expanding additional recreation offerings through either parks and/or other facilities in Woods Cross and North Salt Lake, and that's ongoing right now using funds that are already in place. On the trail side, right now, it's a focus on their schedule coming up, they're focused on revegetation naturalization projects with kind of what we, they're not illegal trails, they're trails that were created haphazardly or by ATVs, people not staying on trails. So they're working on that. They're working on cleanups and maintenance events in the summertime. We do have the potential that we may have an easement granted or maybe even a land donation. We're starting very preliminary process with that. A trails committee member has a contact with one of the property owners up on the hillside. So we'll see how that all plays out. And lastly, I'd say that that plays into a trails master plan. When we get to the general plan update, they're working on a trails master plan, not just for the hillside, but throughout the entire community, walking paths and how we make some interconnectedness throughout the city.
Didn't we just pay a ton of money and have that done?
What was the comment?
Didn't we just have the trails all through the city and on the, we just, we met with Bannifield Trails Committee and we, we went, didn't we do, George, didn't we do something? I mean, we got a big grant and we did it, I thought.
For the trail maintenance?
No, for trail, for the trail general plan, master plan. We redid that just a couple of years ago.
This isn't the active transportation plan that was done, that came up when I met with parks and it was a couple of communities.
I can ask them.
But I have.
I think we did, I mean.
Maybe I'm missing it, maybe they're using that.
We have all new people on our trails committee and they may not know.
That's a good question, I'll ask.
It's worth asking, because I.
What was about the timeframe on that?
I wonder, you got a grant for it, WFRC possibly? I, so when I went and talked to Bruce about parks, we talked a little bit about that there was an active transportation plan. He did not have it on his computer. I don't, I haven't been able to track down a copy of it.
Okay, we did it and we did it with.
But that would make some sense with like throughout the community type trail.
And maybe the answer that I'm not quite getting yet is, I start that, Robin, is that the trails master plan that is in place is not included as part of the general plan and they want to make sure that that's included, so.
Right, like I said, I know, we went in with, I think, three cities and we each put in.
So it was us and two other cities, so I'm thinking that might be, it might be the same thing.
I'll bring that up, thanks.
They didn't, I don't know if Bruce remembered who the cities were, but it's Bannifield, do you know who the other city might have been?
I think it was West Bannifield.
I want to say West Bannifield.
Okay, because I could, we could maybe reach out to those cities and ask them if they have a copy.
I was trying to think.
I don't know how, I'll ask Mike Remington, I don't know how long, how long has Mike been the chair?
He's been on, he was, he was on when we were, when it was done.
Mike's been the chair the last year or so, but he's on, been on the committee for at least two terms.
I'll ask him, I'll just get clarification.
A three term.
I wish I could.
They're not, they're not asking for additional funds, just to make that very clear.
I just, I just want them to know and to be able to have access to it.
If there has been some work done, that might be very helpful to them to save some time.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think it was done, but there's all new people on there, so they may not know that it was, like I said, I can't remember whether, I mean, it was.
Probably four years ago.
Yeah, and it was very.
Mike and Matt. Sorry, Bill. At the corner with the new Maverick.
Oh, where Legacy Trail breaks off to Legacy Trails in Marvill.
Mike and Matt Johnson would be, because Matt's been there a while too.
I can easily ask.
Good references to.
And they did, I mean, they did a big survey, we had, I mean, they came and met with residents and, I mean, it was a big deal.
Good, okay, that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it, Councilman. All right, Mayor's report, I'm going to enlist Councilman Ince and Brant's help if I miss anything. Obviously, I think the importance of my report tonight is what's been happening in LPC. And there's three days of the legislative session left and as they mentioned yesterday, Cameron, that four and a half days, the last week of the session is like four and a half years and you ought to be staying up to date on everything, every moment, because, you know, they take all those weeks to draft bills and go through committees and all of a sudden they're voting on almost everything that appears on the last week. So some positives that we have been successful at, which the chief was excited about, was House Bill 399, the government records amendments would have, which could really have hurt police in doing their job. We were successful in that in the House that passed. Emin domain, I think that's the one that we issued a call to action to you all as far as eminent domaining of not allowing cities to have that authority, that failed and so.
Do you know what the impetus behind that was? Why would they have even brought that, do you know?
Brant, Bill, I didn't ever really catch that.
I did not.
That's what I was trying to, when I looked at the bill sponsors, I thought, well, what, I want to know the backstory.
Was there iron in the fire?
Yeah, that's what I, okay, we don't know that.
Presently, there's House Bill 416, which we took an opposed position on, this, that allows the ombudsman from the state to have more authority in making determinations for us and so that hasn't come up for vote, we have an oppose on that. And then the most recent thing that Brant and I were working on, and I talked with Bill about it today, was combination of House Bill 462, Utah Housing Affordability Amendments and the Senate Bill 34 that passed two years ago that they're calling Senate Bill 34+ and there's some language in there that we get concerned about, that and the language isn't clear. We had Cory and we had Lisa review it when we got it yesterday and our concern with this particular bill is there's what's called SAPs or station area plans that UTA has and we are concerned that what, what is the definition of a station area plan? I mean, is it more than just a front runner station and a track station? Is it BRT stations? Is it even any bus stop for that matter? And the, and the language is really vague on it and, you know, it'd be one that, anything that potentially is, is on a line like that within a half a mile, the state would kind of be setting the zoning requirements for you. And we don't like that and we don't like it from the standpoint of how the language is written now being too vague, but just from the standpoint of, it's like the city manager from Saratoga Springs pointed out, they're mapping their city, it's a growing city, they have places mapped for transportation to go to, but, and so they have planned for that and planned for zoning those areas, but what if they change it on them, you know? And so, so we're not liking it at all and Brant's passionate about it, I got to give credit to him that he was working with me late last night and I think he went later on it than I did. So Brant, you're on the screen, do you want to fill in what I might have missed on that?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. While our meeting was happening, I did receive an email from Wasatch Front announcing that the station area plan is attached to House Bill 462. It was voted on and passed in the House. The concern about these station area plans, it requires us as cities around fixed guideway stops. This is where it gets confusing. I did read the summary bill again. As an example, the concerning part for Centerville is if BRT comes through Centerville, if we are required to have a station area plan around every stop of the BRT, we will be required to increase the zoning within a quarter mile radius around each stop.
So a quarter or a half, Brant?
It's the quarter mile for BRT, half mile for fixed such as light rail, track, front runner. But BRT stops is a quarter mile radius around that stop. So, and then the bill takes another step and says we need to submit these plans to the Wasatch Front Regional Council for approval, then they get submitted to Department Workforce Services. So the state is essentially, and then we're adding another layer of government on top of what we're currently doing for our zonings. So Cory and I are very concerned about the local control being given up and again, respecting council's position on BRT to this point, I think it would be really tough if BRT is forced on Centerville without political support and then all of a sudden turned around and saying, oh, by the way, you need to allow for a multifamily housing around each one of these stops. Now, that's, so past the House floor, the other concerning part in this is that it's bypassing all the standing committees. So that's our frustration that we've discussed with city managers on Friday, is they, it is not going before any of the standing committees prior to coming to the Senate or House floor. They're using this, the special exception to bypass that, which removes our opportunity to share our thoughts and our impacts to each one of our individual cities. Now, we've been left out of these conversations because currently we do not have a BRT stop and according to the language, it doesn't seem it would impact us today. But again, I still, with how vague the language is, I could see them trying to twist it and saying, well, it does apply to any bus stop, because the argument is any bus rail line or bus line supports the fixed rail sites like Farmington Station or Woods Cross. And so any line, any bus stop might be required to have this. So there's a lot of things going on with this one and I would urge all of you to contact all of our representatives tonight and share your thoughts or even ask questions to get a better understanding. But this is severe encroachment on our local control and guiding and directing what's best, we think's best for Centerville city residents.
Will you repeat that House bill again, Brant?
House Bill 462. And more specifically, station area plans. Now Cory had some very serious concerns with other portions of that bill that talks about our moderate income housing report. They are changing, again, you know, the menu items that we selected, the three, they are changing some of those definitions of what those menu items might be and Cory has some other serious concerns with 462.
But that's already passed the House, so we really should be contacting our Senate representatives.
Passed the House and it just, so it's two things, if I understand this correctly, go to the Senate and pass or Senate might have some other changes and it goes back to the House. It could be two more votes or just one more vote. But I would encourage you to call even after the meeting as our representatives, I, there's some serious concerns with, with this language and how they're passing it from our standpoint.
Well, the University of Utah just did a big study about how the development around these stops were supposed to be increasing the ridership and they found out that they're not, that it's, you're getting luxury townhomes built around them and they're not, they're not riding. University of Utah just did a huge study where they're finding out that buildings, things are.
The other.
Oh, that's concerning.
Good point, and the other concerning part of this is that.
I'll have Cory send it to you, I talked to him about it. They just, they presented it to the planners down in at their last conference.
Have Cory send that out to the council.
Have Cory send that out to the council.
Yeah, that would be nice.
They're just asking for links to this study.
Can you have that, Cory sent us that link that Robin's referring to? Robin said she got it from Cory.
There's a University of Utah, the study that they presented, um, at the planner, I guess the planners convention or whatever it was.
The AP, it's the APA UT Conference.
Yeah, and, and they, they did a, put a study that had been done by the University of Utah showing that, and they've done it not only for Utah, but other areas where it's not, uh, increasing the ridership, but yet it's increasing the densities.
The other concerning part of, of this bill from my standpoint, I don't know if Lisa will agree, is we have created a land use task force specifically for these type of items. It says not, as far as I understand, it's not been gone before the land use task force for even consideration to recommend going forward to the, the state legislature. So, lot of, lot of steps for skip in this, in this bill. And of course is this highlighting potential other bills, uh, skipping some of these steps that will continue to approach on local authority.
This is where they do allow texting in council meetings when things are happening at the moment.
Well, we're not texting ourselves, we're texting.
That's true.
We're good. I was going to say, we're texting our center reps.
We're good.
So we need to send this to Stuart Adams.
And Todd Wyler.
Okay, and Wyler, okay.
If it goes back to the House, you'd have an opportunity for Representative Hawks to turn it down.
Yeah, so should we be texting him as well?
Yeah, he could step across the hall and ask him the whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Do we have?
Until it's fully passed.
I know I've got a note somewhere for Adams and Wyler's phone numbers, but do we have those?
Wait, I thought I had them on here right close and I can't find them.
Oh, yeah.
I, yeah, I was going to say, I'm going to have to go.
Well, you send them all out to us, Mayor, so that we have it.
I've texted them numerous times in the last month, yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
So that we have all three of them that we can do as soon as the meeting's over?
I know I've got Tim's from last week.
I think Brant sent them out about.
Well, that's what I thought, but I was looking.
Did you send them out three or four weeks ago, Brant?
Maybe did.
Brant, you're muted.
All right. I sent them out a little bit ago. I, I have them right here and I could send them out again, right?
Thank you.
I'll, I'll email them to you if that's okay?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Or do you want me to text them to you?
I'll take, I'll take a text on them.
I will, I will text you after the meeting so I don't violate any rules here, so.
Okay.
Uh, okay, um, Brant and Bill, LPC, is there any bills that, uh, I've missed that you think the council should be told about?
I don't think there's any now.
Okay. All right, um, and the only other thing, this is an information thing for fun, is Cog Talked and they wanted us to let everybody know about the Heritage Festival that the, that is happening May 19th through 21st. It's a community event celebrating the history, agriculture, animals, and cross Pacific to Davis County. So, um, so that's it for my report. Brant, city manager report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I only have two items. First item is about two months ago, I was in need of a new passport and I know cities have been doing this. When I interned for Syracuse back in 2009, uh, the city, you could actually go to Syracuse City to renew your passport. So we tried to make a, my wife and I tried to make an appointment with, uh, the USPS, no, not knocking them at all, Councilmember McEwen. We couldn't get in for an appointment, but we could easily go down to Leighton City offices and get our passport and they would help us file. Having the conversations with a couple of city managers, this is a great service that we could provide our residents and so Jacob and Jennifer are going to help us potentially bring that service to Centerville unless you have any concerns with that. Doesn't take a lot of time, we can have a, a brief work session to discuss what that would entail, but it doesn't take much, but I think it could be a great service to our residents. So I might want to make you aware of that and thank you everyone for responding to the doodle poll. I have two dates that will work, uh, thanks to Councilwoman McEwen and Councilmember Hurst for confirming that March 29th, Tuesday, March 29th and Thursday, March 31st, those evenings, we will have our budget discussions. And that'll give time for Nate to, Nate and I to finalize the agenda and get that before you. But we'll have that here at City Hall, we'll provide dinner that night, on those two nights.
What time should we block, Brant, from when to when?
So right now I have it 5:30.
Okay.
Since it matches what time we start our work session. If we need to push it to six, I'm okay with that as well, if that's easier for you.
And that was the 29th and the 30th?
31st.
31st.
31st. All right, is that everything you have, Brant?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, then I would look, uh, as talked about earlier, for motion to go to closed session with the intent not to return.
Second.
Well, you guys, you're, you're first and I'm looking for the motion.
Oh.
So you're making. Sorry, nah. I'll make a motion to go to closed session two.
For the.
Is that what you were waiting, going to queue me on?
For the purpose.
The, for the purpose of discussing specific real estate parcels related to our cemetery.
Second.
Lisa, do you want to meet?
Is that good enough?
Amend my motion? I can see it coming out of your mouth.